Let us pray. Holy and loving God, we are so grateful to be here tonight. We are grateful for every educator, every administrator, every parent, every student that is in this room. We are grateful for a community that cares about our education, the education of our children. And so we pray a blessing on this meeting tonight, that as we discuss and talk and ponder, that we make the very best decisions for all involved. We pray this in your most holy name. Amen.
All right, and then I think we are fortunate enough to have the PKMS cross-country here to lead us in the pledge.
Can we first say how cute they are? Aren't they adorable? I am proud to introduce our outstanding fifth and sixth graders who represented PKMS on our first cross-country team this season. You guys can clap if you want. It's pretty cool. These students have demonstrated incredible dedication, teamwork, and perseverance, showing up early, running in all kinds of weather, and supporting one another every step of the way. Help me recognize our PKMS runners. We have Marley Howell, A.C. Yendell, Bennett Nixon, Charlie Hembry, and Collins Oliver. And they are going to lead us in the flag salute.
Attention salute pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. All right, I have six o'clock. Call the meeting to order. Roll call, please. Here. Here. Appreciate everyone being here tonight. Indigenous Peoples' Day presentation.
Come on up, Ms. Marvin. All right, I'll let you kind of fill everybody in on what this is.
Okay. So today was Indigenous Peoples' Day, and we've had videos that we've sent out talking about how much better we are working together, taking care of things. We have tonight with us Shelby Reese and Tinley Reese. Shelby's our senior student member for Indian Education, and Tinley is our Choctaw District Four princess, and she's also a member of our Indian Education Program. Do you guys want to come up?
We're going to do a little prayer for them.
Thank you, ladies. So they're amazing representatives for the Choctaw Nation, both being members of the Choctaw Nation and our high school. We also, on Indigenous Peoples' Day, have opened up our Beaded Grad Cap applications. You guys have seen all of those grad caps at graduation. This is our seventh year, and we have yet to have one cap be close in pattern or color. So we're real proud of that, and we're just wanted to let you guys know that. If you had any questions about the Beaded Grad Caps at all. Nope? You're good? Awesome. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, Support Employee of the Month.
Do we want to swap the like cheer?
We can. Sure. Everybody okay with that? Okay. PHS Cheer Academic State Champion Recognition.
Okay, so one of the rules is never give a load to the mic, however...
I don't probably need a mic. It's a bad thing. So I can totally do it without a mic because this is a little bit loud. So my girls, I can't put any of this. This is not me at all. This is their dedication. This is their hard work. This is their mom and dads. All the teachers, not me, from grade school up that have done this. We were talking, there are eight 4.0s that I had going into it. So their combined GPA was a 3.954 out of four because it's not weighted. So that is great. Let's give them a big round of applause. Stand up, girls. Stand up. All right, come up here, and I will call you out. All right. Sorry, I know two of you have already been up here. So sorry. Okay, so my seniors, my seniors are Presley House, Shelby Reese, Cadence West. My juniors are Harlow Jones, Canterbury Macbeth. My sophomores are Julianne Merritt, Addie Saki, Katie Riley, Brookly Dozier. And my freshmen are Abby Cunningham, Lila Lum, and Tinley Reese. So again, we are so proud of them. This is a huge thing because we are a 5A in cheer. So way to bring it home, girls. Good job.
So Ms. Odom, have we been academic all states before? Okay, so there you go. That's awesome.
Well, y'all are more than welcome to sit here and enjoy the meeting if y'all also want to take this time to... It'll be really fun. Yeah. All right, now we have Support Employee of the Month.
Hey, we will start with the primary.
Well, I would like to introduce Ms. Raylene Ellis. Ms...
Can I have this board come up front to you real quick? Sorry. Hold up.
Okay. Raylene is new to the primary school this year as a teacher's assistant. She helps us out as a building aide in the kindergarten building and the first-grade building. She assists those teachers and works with the students, and she has just come in and done a wonderful job. I feel like it's a great honor for someone who's just been hired in just her first few months of employment with our school to be chosen for this award. And so I'm very proud and glad to have her as an employee this year. She has come in, as I said, she does a great job with the students. The teachers absolutely love her. She does everything that she can possibly do to help out in any way imaginable, and she does it with a smile on her face and without complaining, and I really appreciate her, and I'm glad she's a part of our family.
There you go. Congratulations. All right. You'll stay up here because we're going to picture at the end. So Ms. Moore, come on up.
This is Ms. Carla Gillum. She was the very first person I met when I entered this new position. I was sitting in my office for a week before I met her. She had scheduled her, I think, vacation, and I was all by myself. I quickly learned that I had none of the answers, but this person I'd never met named Carla had all the answers. I would call to find out something, and I would get the same response every time. Carla will know what to do. The second week I was at work, Carla came, and I told her I had never missed someone so much in my life. I was very thankful to have her, and she has proven that the statement is true. Carla knows what to do. Her colleagues share the same appreciation for this lady. A few of their comments are, "She is Wonder Woman." "Ms. Gillum is very knowledgeable and helpful. She is willing to help whenever she is needed. I appreciate her in all the ways she helps everyone in Upper." Another said, "Ms. Gillum has been nothing but welcoming and friendly to me as a new teacher. I see how she is continuously helping others. She's friendly to the students and parents, and she seems to be the go-to for many. She's invaluable. She's a wealth of knowledge. She is always a great help and keeps everyone organized. She's amazing all around." You'll know who this is from. "There was a day my son stayed on the bus, and she was a rock star. When it came to trying to find him, she knew exactly what to do." And I could go on and on, but we're very thankful for Carla, and I can't wait to work longer with her and learn all her ways. Thank you, Carla.
And I will say, this is, as they're working the way down, everybody gets a $50 gift card with this. First National Bank right across over here by Walmart, they've sponsored this. So $50 gift card, and then at the end of the year, there's a $400 yearly award with this, too. So thank you, First National Bank. All right, so you guys got to come in the middle. Carla, there you go. Awesome. Sorry, this morning you had to do it with me. There you go. There you go. Good luck. Thank you, guys. This is very...
Do we have any comments from the public?
No, ma'am.
All right.
So if you'll look with me to the financials, we'll start with September. Starting with the general, our revenue is down slightly from last September. Last September, we received the Teacher Empowerment, which is for our Teacher of the Years in September, and we have not received that funding yet this year, but we expect to receive it soon. Our expenditures are up compared to last September. So this September, the salaries are up. We also purchased two 2026 school buses, and we paid for them in September. So that is why the expenditures have really increased from September compared to last year. Looking at Building Fund, our revenue is down slightly from last year. A lot of that is just our interest earnings. Interest is going down, and we have less in the Building Fund account, so interest is down for this year. Our expenditures are up for our Building Fund for the month of September. In September, we went ahead and we made our loan payment on our land, and we paid over $200,000 extra in principal, and this way we are going to save on our interest in the long run. So we went ahead and made that payment. Looking at Child Nutrition, revenue is up just slightly, and expenditures are also up just slightly for the month of September. So if you'll flip it to the backside, should be our year-to-date for September. Our revenues for General Fund are down because of state and federal funding. Our state funding, our textbooks all came in last year at one month. Now they're spreading them out throughout the year. We received our Teacher Empowerment already at this time last year, and we also received the School Resource. We received 24 and 25 last year. This year, we just have the 26 in. And our federal funding is down because of all the prior-year ESR that we will no longer be receiving. Our expenditures are up compared to last year at this same time. Like I said, we purchased two 2026 school buses. We've also purchased the ag truck already, and we purchased laptops and desktops for the district. And we're purchasing all of these so we can utilize them this school year, having them early, utilizing them all school year. Looking at our Building Fund year-to-date, revenue is down, and that is due to a prior-year ESR that came into the Building Fund last year. And our expenses are up because of the loan payment that we just made. Also, we purchased the land beside PKMS, and we've also paid over $80,000 on the HVAC Building Fund project at PKMS Gym. Child Nutrition revenues are down just slightly from last year, and that is due to a timing on when we received our summer federal funding. That's all that is. And our expenditures are up just slightly for Child Nutrition, increases in salaries, utilities, and some OPA. OPA goes up every year, so that also increases a little bit each year. Looking at the total operation, our balance is still good as of September 30th, but if you think about all the purchases that we've made this year already, it really, we are at a very good in our total operation balance there. If you'll turn to the next sheet, we'll look at the encumbrances that we have, and we'll just start looking at the very first one, PO number 477. That is out of our Indian Ed program, and that's for school and classroom supplies. About halfway down, PO number 484, that is for a AED equipment cabinet, sorry, for our baseball and softball field that's needed out there. And if you'll turn the page...
And just so you guys know, that's based on recent laws, too. We had to have AEDs within three minutes of every event, so that's something we had to get done.
On the second page, about halfway down, there are PO 514 through 518. During that last storm in September, we had some roof damages at different sites, and so there's several POs right there that we had to just come in and get those fixed. And then near the bottom...
I want to make a comment real quick on the roofs, too. We ended up going with a company out of Fort Smith, and we've been trying since I've been here, so for three years, we've been trying to fix roofs, and we've had leaky roofs for a while, even prior to a storm. So we're going with a different vendor, letting them come in, seeing if they can fix it, and so far, they've done a marvelous job. Like, we've had really great, great stuff from them coming in and doing it. We've had several big rains, and Upper, for example, has been a building that's leaked on the north side ever since I've got here. And I have, I just talked to the Upper teachers this morning, and they're like, "Nope, it hasn't leaked at all." So big win for us to get some of our roofs fixed so that they're no longer leaking.
So almost at the bottom, still on page two, PO number 525 was for two HVAC systems over at the PKMS.
And I'll jump on that real quick, too. So when we're getting to HVACs that are from the '90s, we have a couple of different options. We can either pay $7,000 and put a part in them, and then, or we pay 14 and just fix them and replace them. And so we're opting to just replace all of those instead of trying to put Band-Aids on them. They're so old, we need to replace them anyway. So that's really what's happening with some of the HVACs that you've seen. Last couple of months, we've come in with more HVACs, that's why.
Is it this? It seems a little bit there. Okay, we'll keep going. On page three, near the bottom, there's another HVAC. And like he said, we're trying to just replace them because they are like 20 years. So... And then page four, and I'm just going to kind of keep going, sorry. About halfway down, PO number 566, that is for our charging station. Our electric buses should be coming in this year, so we're going, go ahead and get that charging set, have a PO in place so we can get that and get with OGNE and get everything worked out, and we will get refunded for this. PO number 574 is also an HVAC out at the press box at the football field. And then if you'll go with me to the Building Fund... Oh, yay. On the Building Fund, I just kind of want to point out, number PO number seven, this would be an additional principal payment. This would be after we receive all of our ABLOREM, have our Building Fund projects. That should split in place because we want to pay down that interest and not be paying that out. PO eight and nine, PO number eight is for the primary bathroom flooring. PO nine is for the high school gym, foyer, and the restrooms there. And then PO 11 is for the renovations for both primary and high school, the restrooms at the gym, and also the foyer at the high school. So that's what those POs are for. And then Child Nutrition, the first one, PO number 20, that is to finish up our meat grant that we actually received last year that we could hold over, and so we're finishing that up. And then PO 23 is our normal OPA PO. And then the last one, number 24, is OGNE. Our utilities have gone up, so we're hoping this will cover us for the rest of the year. And then the rest is your support for all of the funds. Does anyone have any question?
Do you have any change orders? There's one. One change order.
Mr. Kent, there's a change order in here.
For the PKMS...
The HVAC.
Oh, 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 that should be in the packet. I'm sorry. Do you want to cover that, or...
I thought you were going to back.
Okay, so that one is for the PKMS. We were getting the HVAC done, and it is done now. We were going to put the SOX in, just like we did at the high school gym, but the contractors had issues getting the SOX in and design on them. He came in with the alternate plan, putting a, I think he called it a user, where it's basically going to get all of that out, and he said it would work just as good as putting SOX in. It'd be $12,000 cheaper. So we're like, "Okay, let's do that." So it's a change order, not on the adding but taking away. So that's, we like those type of change orders.
Does anyone have any questions? Not entertained a motion with regards to our consent agenda? Is there a second?
Also.
Roll call, please. Heck?
Yes.
McGee? Adams? Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the budget for the 25-26 school year based on the estimate of needs.
All right. So Chuck, if you can get that switched over.
Okay, so in your packets, you've got our budget. We're just going to go and slide through this and take a look at it. So on the, on the first slide here, this is our approved appropriation. This is based on the estimate of needs. So this is the legal limit that we can have on any of our three operational budgets. Most of this presentation is going to be dealing with the general budget. Over half the slides here are general. General is going to be the biggest item. Building and child nutrition won't be near as much. So let's go ahead and get going on the general revenue. So you can see this in your packet. I've got this sheet in there because this is the sheet that you really need to be able to look at. So when we're looking at the district and the local sources, we projected a 5% growth. So if you track that from '22 all the way through '25, and then you look at where we're at in '26, we have a 5% growth projected. Last year, we had 4.6. Prior to that, we had more. So 5% is about where we're anticipating our growth to settle at. If you look at the county, 5% growth is what we're anticipating as well. So that's basically, we're taking the FY25 numbers on the revenue, and then we're adding the 5%. That's where we're getting our FY26 budget numbers from. When we look at the intermediate county, last year it was 7%. We're only projecting 5%. So we don't want to project highly. On the revenue side, we want to project low, and on the expenditure, we want to project high. So that's kind of why we're not exactly on. When we look at the state dedicated sources, we've had a 2% drop the last several years. So we did that as well. You'll see there's actually a 2% drop on that one because we think we're going to stay like we have the last two years. So that's a pretty easy projection for us. When we look at state aid, you'll see we kept it balanced from last year, and then we subtracted about $200,000 going into this year, and that's, we've continued to get a drop in our student population. So this is state aid funding. So as we get into later in the slide, you'll see state aid is a big, big piece of our funding. So we did take a $200,000 hit on our projections for revenue there. If we go down to the federal sources, this, we can actually look at our federal allocations and get an actual amount. So you'll see that number out there to the side. It is down, but that is the actual amount that's on our allocations right now. If you look at the $5,000, it's all over the place. If you look through the years, you'll see up and down, so we just kept it flat. And then if you look at the fund balance, that is our actual carryover. So you'll see when you add all that up, $27 million is what we're projecting that we'll have in growth this year, which is actually down from last year. So we are anticipating to have less revenue this year than what we had last year. On this next slide, you'll see this basically shows where our money comes from. So we've got 59% of our, almost 60% of our entire budget comes from state aid. So that's huge for us. So when we have population drops like we've had, two years ago, we were sitting at 2187. Last year, we were at 2139. This year, we're anticipating 2142 to 2145, somewhere in there. So we're going to have a drop. We're going to go from 2187 all the way down to our new high, which is maybe 2142. So it's going to, it's going to hit us. That's where that $200,000 on the previous page came from. Then you'll see our local is our next biggest at 13%. You'll see federal is all the way down to 11. You go back a couple of years ago, it was much higher, but it's all the way down to 11 now. It's continued to drop. And then our county is at 2%. So that's kind of the breakdown of where our revenue comes from on the general side. If we look at the state aid, since that's the biggest component, our revenue from '22 to '26 has gone up. The last three years, our state aid has been pretty level. So I know you probably can't see those little numbers there, but it's pretty level, and that's, that's the takeaway from this. We've, even though we've lost some students, we haven't really taken a big hit. I do anticipate FY26 being down a little bit, but best be anticipated, so when you lose students. Next slide I want to show real quick. This is, this is really encouraging, though. Even though our local ABLOREM isn't a huge component for us, it still is. I mean, it's still really significant, and we've had a 3.72% growth on average every year. So this year was a little over 7% on ABLOREM growth. So that's huge. Last year was 3.86, year before that was 6.77. So we've got a really nice, steady growth in our local ABLOREM, which is a big win for our district. Okay, so now on the expenditure side, you'll see this sheet in your book. What I want to basically go through on this sheet is, for us, once again, we go through, we look... we look from '22 to '25, we see what the projections are that we can add to '26. So, for us, what we did is we just took '25, we did a 5% increase on dang near every item, um, on here. So, if you look at our totals, you'll see pretty much everything except for maybe non-expenditures has got a 5% increase across the board. Once again, if we're gonna project, we're gonna project high on the expenditure side. So, um, I know right now, it looks like we're spending a lot, but we will continue to tighten down. We're, we basically are getting through all the things that we know we're, we're gonna do. We're trying to do them now, so in the spring, if for some reason, the, the federal government eases up and has some differences, we can obviously loosen up in the spring. But if they stay like we are, we're gonna be pretty tight in the spring. So, getting all the things that we feel like we have to get done now is kinda why you're seeing our, our expenditures up, um, in the report that, that Ms. Martin gave. Uh, I wanna go through and kinda talk about what this looks like overall. Um, if you look at the bottom of that sheet from FY '22 all the way to FY '26, you'll see in '23, FY '23 from '22, you had a 2.9% decrease in our expenditures. FY '24, we have 7.4% increase. So, '24 was a big year. We did a lot of things. '25, we actually had a 2% increase as well. Um, and so, for this year, you'll notice on there, we did project a 5% increase, but 5% is heavy. We're not gonna spend, we're not gonna have an increase over last year of 5%. But, uh, once again, I'd rather be high on the expenditure side. Our max limit from the very first slide that we showed, uh, was 25 million and 326. That's the estimate of needs number that we have to stay under, and you'll see we're only at 23.6. Even with our 5% projection, we're only at 23.6. So, we've got over, over 1.6, almost 1.7 in cushion with this expenditure budget. So, I feel really comfortable that we won't be coming back to you guys and saying, hey, we need a general fund supplemental. Um, if you, Elizabeth, what that means is at the end of the year, if we go over any of those amounts from our estimate of needs, we can do a supplemental and say, basically, we went over, here's why, and we're good to go, and we can spend more than the estimate of needs. But I don't see that happening on this budget because we're gonna be pretty tight anyway, and we got 1.7 million in cushion. So, any questions on the general fund side? Cover this last slide real quick, and, yeah, last, last one real quick. Um, so, basically, this slide asks the question, how do we spend our, our money from the general side? And 76% is instruction, direct instruction. 11% is maintenance and operation, which you can't have, you gotta have maintenance and operations. So, it's, these things always kinda amaze me, you know? They, they say instructional cost, well, you only spend a 76%. Well, transportation is in here too. I mean, and, you know, so if you combine the instruction and the maintenance operation, you're at 87%. That's right there, really, two instructions, because you can't have instruction without maintenance operations, transportation, that stuff. Um, our central office financing, in this office that does district financing, 3%. And then, all admini- administration and staff, so that's every single building's office staff. The office staff all across, and me, Ms. Tillery here as well, um, that is 10%. So, if you look at it, the vast majority of what we do, we, we put towards kids, and that's the way it should be. Any questions on any from, anything from the general side? Okay, moving on to the building side. The building fund, um, is our second operational budget, and it does exactly what you would think it does. It's basically paying for our buildings, our operations side, any type of repairs, new construction, all of this has to come out of that. Repairs, depending on what it is, can come out in general over here, but a lot of times, all of our new construction, the things that our capital improvement plan just approved a couple of months ago, these are coming out of our building fund. So, we've already started some of these projects, uh, that we, that we've talked about. So, let's, uh, let's dig in. So, this is the next, um, sheet that you have. So, if we look at the source, and this has got both revenue and expenditure on the same sheet. So, if you look at your 1,000 on your revenue, um, we're gonna keep that flat. You'll see there's a pretty good amount of movement from year to year, so, we really can't, can't mark where that's at. I mean, crap, we go from '24 having 847,000 to 542 last year. So, um, from our end, we're just gonna keep it flat at 542. State aid, um, the 3,200s there, we're, we're wanting that to stay the same. Uh, they haven't come out and told us what our red blood funds are gonna be, so we're anticipating it'll be the same. We could be off on that, but we have to anticipate it'll be the same. And then, federal sources, you'll see every year, we've got money in the federal side of this, but we just put zero. Once again, on the revenue, I'd rather project under on revenue, over on expenditure. And then, balance sheet moving that forward. So, you'll see on the revenue side, we're looking at 3.6 on our revenue. If you come down to the, the bottom half of that, the expenditures, operations, maintenance, we went ahead and did a 10% increase on operations and maintenance because we do have more buildings, this for one, um, that we've got in place now. And we're continuing to upgrade buildings, put HVACs in place. Um, the gyms, we have three gyms that have HVAC now, which they didn't before, so we know costs are gonna be up on some of these things. So, we went ahead and projected 10% increase from last year on the operations. And then, on the facility acquisitions improvements, that number, the 1.537, that is exactly from our capital improvement plan. So, that's where that number came from. So, we pulled it directly over because those are the things that we're wanting to get done, um, out of our building fund on that. When you tally that up, that's 2.188 million. Um, you'll see from the first page, our building fund legal expenditure is 2.78. So, we've got webber room there, about almost 600,000 worth of webber room that we're gonna be under. Once again, I don't anticipate, anticipate a supplemental coming through the building fund. Oh, there you go. Um, child nutrition, uh, OPA is our vendor in child nutrition. This is the last fund that we're gonna talk about tonight. Um, so, on this one, on sources, we've just kept everything flat. So, if you look across, you'll see from '25 to '26, we, we kept literally everything flat. We're anticipating, and if you look at your sheets, you'll see it's pretty dang close. Um, and then, on the expenditure side, uh, we did go ahead and increase by 10% because we, we need to. We need to, um, get some things done on the child nutrition side. And you'll see the, um, ch-ch-ch-ch-ch, uh, what's the 775 from? That's just the increase of 10% from the, from the previous FY '25 on the function, on the expenditure there. Um, so, our total there is 1.42. We have 1.9 as our legal limit. So, once again, we're under about almost 500,000. So, I feel like our legal budgets are perfectly fine. I don't anticipate any supplementals. We're well under on all of them. Do you guys have any questions on any of the direction that we're wanting to go in any of the three operational funds?
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the budget for the 25, 26 school year based on estimate of needs. I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Yeah.
Yes.
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 Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the election resolution for the election of school board members.
All right. So, we have seat number one and seat number five, um, that will be up for election. Our filing period is gonna be December 1st through December 3rd, from 8:00 to 5:00. Um, the reason, remember, the reason we have two, um, is Ms. Smith came in and is serving a term that is more than the halfway mark. If it was after, then she could serve the term, but she's, it's brand new. So, basically, we'll be running the election, seat number three and seat number, or seat number one and seat number five. Um, the primary will be February 10th, and the primary election will only take place if we have more than three people that, that run for either one of these seats. And then, the general election will be April 7th.
No questions or comments, I entertain a motion.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Yes?
Yes.
Discussion and vote to approve or not approve an adjustment to the salary index for the 26, 27 school year.
So, on this, um, we have a goal of getting all of our principals off the index. So, we've been, all of our hires, um, for principals have been off the index. So, that's kind of our goal. We've got several, um, that we, that needed to come off the index that were just on there that we weren't using. So, we, we adjusted, took those off. We had adjustments to our high school principal index, which is a continuation from the past several years. Uh, and we adjusted our assistant superintendent. We have brand new assistant superintendent that we just, uh, approved, um, so, or that we will approve today, hopefully. Uh, and this is an adjustment before we get there. We've got a, a salary already set for that person.
Any questions or comments? Entertain a motion.
I make a motion we approve the administrator's director's salary schedule.
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve a stipend for football media interview in the amount of $1,600.
Yeah, so, this has been a, uh, Mr. Hackler was here earlier, and, and he has left, but he was working on this. Um, we, you know, we have the radio back for our football games. Uh, one of the things that we've been doing prior to the football games is we've, we're having our high school football coach get on and do a player of the game, a preview for the upcoming game, and doing a, a media slot, basically, on the radio. It's a sponsored slot, so, the sponsored money that's going to that, we're just giving as a stipend to the coach that's doing the interviews. So, um, from our end, there's, this is no additional pay out of our pocket. It's just basically the sponsors are paying for this, but we're running it through our payroll, and it's gonna be labeled as a stipend, so it needs to get board approved like all of our other stipends. You'll see it on that sheet. I believe it's marked, um, on there. Yep. Any questions on that one?
How many out of the schools call?
No, sir. And not only is the stipen, I mean, that's everything. So, uh, value and explain kinda what all's coming out of that.
So, uh, we calculated like his taxes, his FICA, and his TRS for that person's, um, and this is what, I think it was like within like $2.
So, literally, the school's got nothing out of pocket on this.
Any other questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the football media interview in the amount of...
Sirs. Roll call, please. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve board policy.
So, uh, we were looking at the EMG policy and the FFAD policy tonight. Uh, both of these policies, we don't have in place, so they're not an adjustment to our current policies. They would both be new policies. Uh, as we started digging in, uh, we realized that we just didn't have either one of these policies, and we wanna be preventative instead of reactive, proactive instead of reactive. So, the first one is the EMG policy, and we don't have currently, um, a policy in place for service animals and restricting animals from school grounds. So, um, this policy, we reached out to OSSBA, this is their policy. Uh, so, we didn't change anything from their recommendations. So, this is the OSSBA recommendation based on our new policy book. This fits right in as the EMG policy. Uh, what this means is that we'll have to post signs on our locations, um, if approved, and make sure that we, we do limit, um, animals to those service animals that meet the definition of the service animal, uh, on the federal side. So, and that's spelled out in our policy. So, there will be some exceptions. I know we currently have, um, some animals that are practicing in our district, and, and it gives us the ability to make those exceptions with superintendent approval. So, I feel like it's a, a pretty good policy, and if we don't do something, we're gonna have somebody get bit or something happen, um, and then, we're gonna come back and do this on the back end. I'd rather do it on the front end instead of the back. Uh, the other one is the FFAD policy. This is our bedbug policy. Uh, so, we currently don't have a policy on bedbugs. Uh, we do have one on lice, um, because it's, CDC sees it as a contagious disease, whereas bedbugs are not seen the same way. So, um, it's, I know that's odd to some people. It was to me. I was like, what do you mean? Lice is a CDC thing and bedbugs is not, and that's, that's the way it is. So, um, so, we do have lice policy in place already, but we do not have a bedbug policy. This would basically allow us to have a bedbug policy in place. Tomorrow morning, our administration team will be meeting with us, and we'll discuss this. We've already talked about procedures outside of the policy to make sure that we had clear concise procedures on how to deal with bedbugs if, um, Poto ends up having to deal with bedbugs. But, we just don't have anything, thing in place, so we'd much rather be proactive instead of reactive on these items. Any questions?
So, no questions, is there a motion?
I make a motion to approve the two policies.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please. Yes.
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 Discussion and vote to approve or not approve adding pre-med defender to our Section 125 plan as a voluntary benefit.
Yeah, so, this is a unique piece. Um, I've been working with Sherry Stacy ever since I got here, and we've really pushed away from all of our, um, you know, these type of insurance things. However, um, this one is one that we do wanna give our employees the options, um, to accept. What this does is, right now, we have a lot of people either on Health Choice High or Health Choice Basic. And a lot of people will be on Health Choice High because you get some benefits from that, but there's still an 80/20 on there. So, if you, someone goes into a major ordeal, there's an 80/20 piece that comes back and bites them. That 20 can be a lot when it's a major ordeal. Well, what pre-med defender does is instead of going Health Choice High and getting the 80/20, you go to Health Choice Basic, and then, the difference, the gap between Health Choice High and Basic is what they feel. They'll come in and pay that as a secondary insurance, and then, they pay that whole 20. So, if there's a major issue, you'll be glad that you had them, and, and it's, it's actually cheaper. You get money back, um, from Health Choice High to going Health Choice Basic and Pre-med Defender. Not for everybody. Uh, we have a lot of people in our district that are, are young and healthy, and for them, they're gonna use the Health Savings Account, which is great. They're building that money. It'll, it can be a, a part, and when they hit 62, they can pull it out. I think it's 62, and they can pull it out, and it'll be a, a benefit for them long-term. But then, you've got others, um, that really aren't healthy and need this as an option because they can't afford that 20%, that 80/20 will really hit them. So, that's where something like this comes in. So, we just wanna make sure that our employees have that as an option. So, nothing from the school, there's, there's no extra work on our end. It's, they're not signing up from the school. It is a third party that's coming in, a third vendor, and doing that.
Roll call, please. Yes. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the Indian education bylaws.
This is a yearly approval item by you all, and this year, there's no changes to either the Indian Ed or the JOM. Our committee, our parent committees meet in Ms. Marvin's office and look over them and discuss them, and this year, they decided that no changes were needed as of now. So, we need these approved in order to apply for our grant money, et cetera, so.
Entertain a motion to approve the Indian education bylaws and the Johnson O'Malley Committee bylaws.
Make a motion to approve the bylaws.
I'll second the motion.
Roll call, please.
Yes.
Yes. Discussion and vote to approve or not approve the following contract agreements for the 25, 26 school year.
Yeah, so, LaFlore County Youth Services, uh, and I'll go back and say, all five of these items are all annual items. So, there's nothing here that hasn't come to you guys before. Um, LaFlore County Youth Services, uh, we've got a partnership with them. Uh, the MOU for I Love You Guys, that is our standard response protocol. Um, nothing, nothing new there. Uh, and none of these are financial. These first three have no financial pieces to them at all. The third one is TOPS, that's the purchasing, inter-local law purchasing agreement. It just gives us the ability to, um, have pre-bid items, avoid the bidding process. Um, item four, that's the Poto Police Department MOU. It did change. Um, that one was a 30,500. It, the only change on that contract from last year to this year is the 30,500 now says 46,000. So, um, recently, the salaries for our police officers last Monday, uh, was approved to, to get an increase, and basically, what this does is it, it's the actual cost for the officers versus the old cost, which was 30,500. So, it's just updating that. We currently have two officers officially, but really only one. We have Donnie Reed that's been out, uh, with injury, um, so, we're looking forward to getting him back and getting two officers again. Uh, but, um, this was an agreement. If anybody has questions on, on this agreement, feel free to ask. This has been in place for a while now with the city. This has been in place for a while now with the city. Basically, the city will pay up for up to four SROs and we pay for one. And so it's, it's a win for our district and it's a win for the city too, to, to know that the schools are safe. And then item five is the Career Tech Alt Ed Empower. That's what's going to annual item. This is a partnership with DHS, it's a, it's a revenue stream for adult education. So does anybody have any questions on any of the five contracts?
There's no questions, I'd entertain a motion.
I make a motion to approve the contracts.
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Discussion of vote to approve or not approve the OLAP Positions 1, 2, 4, 9, and 13 is recommended by the Oklahoma Public School Investment Interlocal.
Yeah, so this is a yearly item as well. This is what they send to us as recommendations. If there's somebody on here that we want to say no to, we're more than welcome to, but we normally just go with their recommendations. They have a committee in place that does all the recommendations.
No questions, entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendations.
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please. Yes.
Yes.
Discussion of vote to approve or not approve the Gifted and Talented Plan for the 25-26 school year.
Right, this is a yearly item also. In August, you approved our local advisory committee and by law, we have to meet by October 1st. We met on September 23rd and looked over our plan that you had before you and no changes were made to the plan, but I did want to ask if y'all are aware how we identify gifted students in the district. And there's a top 3%, which is students who score in the top 3% on a nationally recognized IQ test, basically. That's the moneymakers and there's no limit on how many students we can have in that category. And when I came in in '22, PODO had 19 students in the top 3%. And I was like, there's no way we have gifted students here. So this year, we've recognized 49 in that, so we've almost tripled that and we're still not where I want us to be, but that's part of what our committee looks at when we meet is how we're, what tests we're using and that kind of thing. So I'm proud of our progress that we've made there. We had 219 students identified in 2022. And you have Category 1 and Category 2. Category 2, you could be gifted in math, recognized by teacher or parents can recommend and even students can recommend themselves for gifted programs. And then the counselors will go through all of that and the testing and that kind of thing and see who actually qualifies. Category 2, we're limited to 8% of our population. You can identify more, but we're only paid for 8%. So you can have unlimited in the top 3% and then in Category 2, we're limited to 8%. This year, we have, or last year, we had 339 identified. So we've improved from 219 to 339. Still not where I want us to be and I think we have a lot more category, top 3% Category 1, but we're on the right track. So the plan hasn't changed and our site coordinators and our teachers are on the committee and are doing a fabulous job of identifying them. They'll call me, I, I tested and we have three more Category 1, so I'm super proud of that. So we just ask you to approve our plan so we can keep identifying these kids. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Someone want to make a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the gifted education plan.
All right, roll call, please. Yes. Discussion of vote to approve or not approve name changes to the activity accounts listed below.
So currently at PKMS and SEC, Ms. Medley has an activity fund that's called Vocal. But when she's actually at these sites, there is more than Vocal. They're doing drama, different activities. So what we're asking is just to change the name. We're not moving any funds, all we're doing is changing the names so it encompasses all of her students. So we're wanting to change PKMS Vocal, which is Project 894, to PKMS Performing Arts and then SEC, SEC Vocal, to SEC Performing Arts.
Any questions about that? Is there a motion?
I'll second his motion.
Roll call, please. Yes. Discussion of vote to approve or not approve the Activity Fundraisers for the 25-26 school year.
You had a nice little list in here of mat squad, PKMS, primary and upper athletics, SEC. So a whole list, we did add one, so you'll see a blue sheet that was in your binder, standalone blue sheet. That is FFA, it was a little bit of a late addition, so we didn't get it in your packet, so just included if you would. But yeah, we've got, we've got a whole list of them.
Does anyone have any questions about any of them? I'd entertain a motion if not.
I'll make a motion to approve the Activity Fundraisers for the 25-26 school year.
Roll call, please. Discussion of vote to approve or not approve surplus items.
Yeah, so PKMS has two different items in here. One, you'll see a spreadsheet with our books, so we're doing some weeding. I will say, Ms. Holly, the new librarian over at PKMS, done a really good job. If you haven't, if you're unaware, which I'm sure you are, because you don't, every day you go to libraries, the PKMS has got a book vending machine. So it's a really cool component. So we were in there talking to Ms. Holly and she was kind of explaining how it works. As a reward for kids, they get to come, they get a coin, they put it in the book vending machine and they get to choose a book. So it's, and it's a partnership with our community as well. So along with that, she's, she's been coming through, going through and weeding a lot of our library out, trying to get stuff that's, that's more recent for our kids and that stuff. So it does look like a lot, but Dr. Gillum's working with her to make sure that, that we're weeding the right things and, and bringing the good, the books that we want in our libraries. And, and then you'll also see just some outdoor umbrellas on there, those were damaged and so once we, we can surplus, we can go ahead and dispose of those, but we need to get them surplus first.
Any questions? Is there a motion?
I make a motion, we approve the surplus requests.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please. So let me just report.
Yeah, so Devon's gone today, so I got the list. So we just talked about surplus, so I want to continue on that. We've made some really big strides in clearing out a lot of our broken items. Last week, we were over at the high school in the forbidden hallway and you can actually stand on one end of the hallway and look straight down to the other end without seeing junk in the hallways. It's, it's amazing. And so I know we've got a lot of work, we've got a lot of rooms we've still got to clean up, but boy, it is nice to get a lot of our surplus out. District-wide, we've just, we store surplus forever and we're finally getting rid of it. So I know you've probably seen some of these big bins sitting out in front of the old, the old wing over there, the old senior wing, that's what that is, and we've had one back here cleaning out back here. So we are trying to get rid of a lot of, a lot of that and we've made a lot of progress. We've got all of our small fleet in the back now. So the surplus is out enough where we can actually get our small fleet inside. When anything hits, we bring it in, overnights, we try to bring it in, so, so it's good. The PKMS HVAC is complete, thank you guys for approving the change order there, we saved some money on that, that was a win. The new epoxy flooring in the PES gym, the high school gym foyer area, restrooms, all of that has been completed. We're in the process of trying to get the fixtures, the stalls, the ceilings, the lighting and all of that done for the restrooms as well. Our goal is to still get it done prior to basketball season starting, it'd be really nice. Mr. Hackler's not here, but I'll give him a shout out. He's done a, a pretty amazing job trying to get that high school gym to look better and it really does. If you haven't been in there, wait till basketball and wrestling season, you guys get in there. You'll definitely see the difference, it looks really good. So now, we're basically, we got the flooring done in the foyer. Ms. Odom, last summer, was painting all of that, so it's all been painted, it's got new flooring in. We fixed those restrooms up, it's going to be a much better venue for, for people. And one of the things that we had, we had issues with when we met as a capital improvement committee is our public comes into those, those restrooms, over at the primary gym and in our main high school gym. And those bathrooms are not very good and that's, people are forming opinions, guests coming in and using restrooms that are, that are run down. So it's going to be nice to actually have facilities that, that we should have in those locations. So really excited about that. In the primary gym, we're working on flooring options. Chrissy's probably like, oh, I thought y'all forgot about that, because we haven't said anything to her because we've been, we've been researching a ton of different flooring options. Devon's got no less than six different types of floors back in his room that we've been walking on and trying to figure out what we want to do and we've been looking at pouring solutions as well. And so until we feel really confident on what's going to be best, we, we don't want to come in and put something subpar in. So, so you'll have to wait a little bit longer on that, but we don't, we certainly don't want to take that floor up until we have something that, that's going to go down and be quickly because anytime we take that floor up, they're out of a gym. So we want to make sure we do it right once. We're also working on getting bids for a generator for this building. That was one of the capital improvement items that got approved, so we're working on that. We, we don't have a bid that we feel comfortable with yet. If you've been over to the PKMS lately, you'll notice that that house that was adjacent or patty corner from the door is gone. It's been, it's been leveled, trees have been cleared out. It's got, it's been packed down with concrete, rocks, not concrete, with rocks. Looks really good, I was out driving on it the other day, it's, it's really solid. So having another parking option for PKMS is going to be a big win with basketball season hitting. I'm sure Bobby's going to be really excited, there's just one more location for people to park. Right now, we're still kind of, we're going to wait and see, once a big event happens, how people use it. So over the, the weekend, on Sundays, the Catholic church right there is going to, feel free, I told them, they're more than welcome to use that parking lot as well, because we've been using everybody's houses and parking lots as our parking lots. So we need to share as well. And then on transportation, we do have our two new bus routes in place and they're, they're out on routes. So glad to get two new bus routes going. We have electric charging station in place, which you heard about earlier, and those two electric buses, we should get by the end of this, this year. So we're hoping by December, we can get those in place and get those on routes. So the one, Bus 23, our electric bus we have right now, man, it works great on those hills. And I think the electric buses, we're, we're learning more and more about them. If you don't drive those suckers, then they, they go dead on you and all that, so we just got to constantly drive them. The more we drive 23, the better it does. It's when you don't drive it very much and you let the charges kind of get out of whack that it's kind of messing up on us. So our hope is that we've kind of got some of the electric stuff figured out and these next two buses will be a, a big win for PODO. Any questions on any of the facility items?
Superintendent, report.
Yep. Parent-teacher conferences, you have a sheet that goes through and shows all the parent-teacher conference numbers. It is exactly as you would expect. At the primary, you have way more and it goes down as you get older. So participation from parents, that's, that's normal. It is interesting when you look at the data from all the way back, what, how far back do we go? 24, 25, and 26, that's, so my first year is the first time we started collecting the data. So it is interesting to look at the data and kind of see where we've gone and, you know, what years people had different trends going and those things. So we'll communicate with our admin team tomorrow on, on that number and just kind of let everybody see where we're at. But I really don't have anything, do you guys have anything on parent-teacher conferences? Okay, thank you.
Is there any new business? I'd entertain a motion to go into executive session. Roll call, please. Yes.
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 It is 7:01.